We have. Here we go. We have a interesting and fairly low key agenda. I'm not seeing some of the people I had expected to see. I'm seeing at least one person I didn't expect to see. And she's embarrassed. Are you here for public comment by any chance? No, you're just here. Nice. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
This is what civic engagement looks like.
It's it's always nice to get our thirty year employees to come to our committee meetings, so. Is there anyone here for public comment that we're? Nope, no public comment. So we will move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the approval of minutes from the May seventeenth meeting. Should we hold that till we have our our? Well, if we have me and Sean here, we're okay. Okay. Um, did you have a chance to look at those, Sean?
I did. Give me one second.
Sure.
Check my notes. Uh, yes, they they were good by me.
Okay, then in that case, I move our approval. You second our approval and we vote. On there we are. Very good. Thank you. And thank you whoever put those minutes together. Item four on the agenda is the capital project updates and summer schedule. And we have um a file attachment that many of us have been able to see. That describes what you'll be talking about.
Yeah, my, I'm perfect. So Travis Randall with Campus Construction. I'll give a brief summary of what we where we've came last month and what we got coming up in front of us for the summer. Um, so phase one, we're continuing closeout prime contracts inching closer to that. Um, the roof is kind of the same situation. We have uh one uh small work area we need to get tightened up. Aside from that, we're working on closing out contractors. We also have middle school can uh temperature controls upgrades project. Which um where since school gets out, we're gonna schedule final commissioning. Um, that will trigger our uh final uh punch list inspections. And we're uh starting on closeout in preparation for that as well. So phase two, that's the active construction that we have going on um right now. A bunch of sites already uh ongoing and a bunch more. We're gonna we're gonna kick off this summer. So I'll start with Enfield. Um, we're starting to replace uh mechanical equipment in the building uh currently now that we're out of heating system on nights. So they're there right now. Um, we've begun demoing uh the existing equipment in the boiler room. As we know, Enfield's getting a new geothermal system there, so that's ongoing. Um, upcoming, we have a new electrical service, the completion of the geothermal by fall. A lot of work at Enfield. Um, it we uh a new EV bus charger, some site lighting sign, uh e-sign out front. Uh, so that's Enfield. At LACS, we have the main entry.
We've got a question here.
I'm sorry.
At infield and obviously I'm mistaken, but I didn't think the geothermal is gonna be live next academic year. And that it will be up and running by next second.
Yeah, yes, yep, yes, certainly by heating sys- season. Yeah, yep. It's it's tight. We'll we'll have it. Yep.
I just wanna make sure we got on, we're recording, right?
Yes.
That is fantastic. Thank you very much.
Expecting to be ready for heating city. Um. Yeah, so I'm gonna go pretty quick, and if anyone has questions, just just chime in and stop me. Um. So uh LACS, we're um finishing up the renovations at the main entry. That's still ongoing. Um, we also have uh additional site renovations. Um, it's gonna continue on this summer. Um, currently, they're installing a retaining wall stairs to the lower play area there. Um, we ran into some rock, some bedrock there, so they're they're actually there right now, taking that out at night, because that can be done on days, very noisy. Um, and then also this summer, we're going to be renovating the existing main office that's moving to the other end of the building into a classroom. So we'll have the renovations there going on this summer as well. Um, for DeWitt, we are um finishing up the auditorium renovations. There were some long lead items on some of the AV equipment. So we're we're wrapping that up. Um, and then we're gonna be installing the theatrical rigging, the curtains and stuff. Uh, they go in last. Um, fire alarm devices for the spaces that we've kind of completed already have come in and they're installed now. They were exceedingly long lead item, so that's good. So we got those in it to wit. Um. Also at Dewitt, the main entry, we're doing a uh secure entry in a greeters space, so that's gonna be happening this summer. As well as um sight lighting around the front walk as well as a stair. It's kind of the southeast corner of the side of the lot. Kind of beside the bus loop, there's a heavily heavily trafficked kind of area that that we're improving there. Um. So that's the way uh South Hill. Um, we have the uh renovation at the main office ongoing. And I think guys nice hard to go over something. Yeah, South Hills, the retaining wall, the the um site improvements to the front to the the bus loop. The renovation of the of current main office into the into a new classroom, that's South Hill. Um. LACS, we are nearly.
Yes. Is that also scheduled to be completed by the fall?
Complete by fall.
At least the bus entrance.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, that's substantial completion. All of our scope of work there that we're doing is for fall is South Hill. Yes. Yeah. Um. LACS is wrapping up now. We've uh the past month, we've got in um we got a lot of finishes complete. Um, the things that we have outstanding there are a living wall and the living roof. Um, the living wall took a fair amount of coordination and the living roof has um some limitations on a planning season. So we can actually get that in now that we're into summer. Um. There's um uh phenolic panels that were long lead time as well that we'll be putting on the run chimney. There's some in the new entry along the front facade canopy there to wrap up at LACS. Uh, high school, the uh G bathrooms, again, we got the fire alarm completed there. Um, we're still working on some punchless corrections of the area G. Uh, toilet rooms, area H bathrooms are still underway. Um, they're pretty much built out at this point. We're just uh installing finishes. There's a lot of tile work in there and then we mounted finish the uh the actual fixtures. Um. And then also at the high school, we're going to be adding acoustical panels. In here, the LGI, um, the upper multi-user uh. Yeah, what sort of looking for the uh? Yeah, yes, the large group instruction of multi-use space and also in area J. So those panels are long lead. We're hoping for those this summer. Um, they're gonna be dependent on the lead time on those. So we got some improvements to look forward to acoustically here. Uh, Caroline, we've uh installed a new bus charger. Um, EV bus charger, we gotta get started up completed on that. Um, this summer, the main work that we have there is we're renovating a set of um gendered bathrooms. Uh, so that's Caroline. Uh Bella Sherman, we have upcoming to start uh many uh site improvements as well as so replacement of some in- interior uh ceilings in the corridor. And Bella Sherman annex. Again, uh many site improvements and we're also enclosing the classrooms that are adjoining the library. That's a lockdown safety um improvement there. Um, probably, yes.
My apologies.
Sure.
For Bill Sherman, the site improvements, I mentioned some of that as the drainage problem.
Yes.
I know those can be permanent walls by the little kiddies library there.
Yeah, over in the annex. Yeah, yep.
And ceiling is asbestos or?
Uh, definitely getting into the ceiling.
Oh, I thought he said ceiling.
Oh, so Bella Bella Sherman, the corridor ceilings at Bella Sherman, yes, they'll be they'll be done under containment. Yes, yes. Uh, Bella Sherman annex, we don't have any uh asbestos abatement there or doesn't uh conflict with any. Um, and also a Bella Sherman annex, the uh library carpeting. And then Boynton, um, we also have uh quite a quite a bit of work at Boynton. This is real similar to Dewitt where we're um renovating numerous uh restrooms. Uh, these are gendered, actually some gendered, some on there's single un- ungendered. Yeah, so there's a mixture of staff, uh gendered, ungendered, multi- uh restaurants there as well as the auditory renovation, real similar to Dewitt. Um, and then the kitchen, uh new flooring, um some new serving line equipment and improvements in the kitchen and serving line area. At Boynton. So that's our current phase. Uh, after that, we have Enfield roof um is awarded. Um, that work is scheduled for next summer. That's based on material availability. Um, just no, no time to get the material this summer for that. Uh, three A two is actually bidding tomorrow. That's our BJM window replacement. So we're that's bidding tomorrow. Um. That work is kind of we scheduled to begin next spring. Uh, in completion uh next next summer twenty twenty four. Um, and then the other uh work that we're kind of have hanging out there is still tracking is three V one. Uh, that's here at the high school, the STEM renovations and HVAC upgrades. So those documents are in SED uh for review and we're expecting them to go out to bid sometime this fall. Pending the SED review.
First, what's the time for the SED review so far? Maybe?
Lately, we're seeing technical reviews within say fifteen weeks or so. Um, the project manager at SED takes up to another fifteen. It's really, that's where it's really been variable. So we we usually assume five to six months just to kind of be safe, but we should be positioned well for bidding in the fall early winter. We get a good uh a good schedule for big cycle for starting in the spring.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, up for Chris. That's a tech.
So one of the projects that I'll I'll add to Travis, thank you for your long list of of uh of work. We got a lot going on and it's it's great to have partners that we do to to make all that construction happen. Um, one of the pieces, a couple of the pieces um out outside of that particular capital project structure, we have a uh some work going on at Northeast Elementary School. We're replacing that. There was an aging retaining wall that we're taking out and sort of terracing that to improve the play space there for the some of the younger students at that building. Uh, so that'll be happening this summer as well as soon as school gets out. We have our ongoing program of improving uh gymnasiums, uh removing those sort of hard operated partition walls and going in with uh with curtains and usually we can pick up some additional uh miscellaneous wall pads and things like that, uh finish up some of those, uh some of the floors as well in terms of striping. Uh, so South Hill will be getting some work this summer. So um South Hill will have a lot of contractors from all kind of directions um on that. Um, also within the last week or so, the first four chargers arrived for electric buses down at the bus garage. Uh, so that material is in hand and um one of my colleagues, Anna, who many of you have met, uh met the contractor over there today to review that, um and they're they're installing those. Um, so that should be done within a few days, we expect. Um, there'll be some commissioning and some sort of startup procedures as that requires those those chargers require. Uh, you know, some controlling to just be sure that they um they're charging the buses appropriately, but we're really excited to get that work coming online. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Chris?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that setup there. So there's a long um paved little island there. Are they gonna be set up along that island? Are they gonna be by that big concrete block structure there?
Yeah, so there's a there's that concrete block building that has some electrical panels in it, um that houses the distribution for what was formerly your your block heaters. That would go out to those little yellow bollards, you know, all along that that central island. Yeah, so that's the infrastructure we're tying into. First, a couple of the chargers will be mounted right on the face of that building. Couple of them um will, looks like will be routed into some of those metal bollards um where the the circuitry for the the block heaters currently is. Uh, so you've got four spots for that um in this first in this first stage.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Hmm? Uh, four point two. Communication efforts. I was misled by that. What does that?
That is me. Hi, everyone.
It is you.
Yes, so hi, everyone. Amanda Verba, Chief Operations Officer for the district and um, I think we were tasked with trying to improve our communications efforts all the time. Um, and this one was specifically around um not only what's happening this summer at each of the buildings for the ease of the principals and the staff, um but also overall the project itself from sort of beginning to where we are. And I think Karen and me had talked about that at that last meeting. So thank you for allowing us about a month to pull this together with the communications team. I wanted to show you some of the amazing work um that has been going on. Um, I want to thank both campus and Tetra Tech. Uh, our our communications department pulled together information and then sent this our way um for feedback. We could receive feedback from uh the two agencies and then we brought that back to the communications team. So what you see before you, I think this is uh page two, which is fine. We'll start here. This is something that's on every single one of the building specific information. Actually, we can go to that second page. We'll start with that. So a lot of when people hear the word asbestos or asbestos abatement, they get really nervous. That's like one of the major questions that we receive. And whenever work requires the abatement of asbestos. And so um many, a couple of years ago, when we started this work, actually, I think it was first in BJM. Um, we created a very easy to read kind of document for staff and families and caregivers to be able to and anybody that worked in the building to understand sort of what does that mean for me? And what does that mean for my building and my state? Can I go into my classroom? Um, you know, can my kids come near and play in the playground? And so this is an example of what's gonna be going out at every single building as sort of the second page of the specific information that's gonna be happening at their building. On the first page, Tricia, if you don't mind going to that first page, this is the sample for Boynton. And so as Travis went through each of those buildings, we have one of these for each of the buildings that's happening. This is new efforts, right? And so these will be on the website. Principals have been able to print these out, put them in backpack mailers, include them in their mailers um to families and their newsletters. It's really just another fantastic way for us to communicate to families. So thank you to the Board of Education for always encouraging our best practices um and improvement of those. And so this is an example, again, as you can see, a very simple overview of sort of the capital project. Then what does it mean for me as a community member? And then um what is the protocol for communication if I have further questions? Right? Because we want to make sure that we remind everyone, staff, students, the family members, the visitors that are walking their dog, right? Who do I talk to if I have questions? Because we don't want um folks that are contracted due to the work being stopped and asked questions, right? So this is another tool for us as well to sort of give those reminders about best practices for communication. So any questions about the building specific communication? And I have samples of all the buildings for you, um and they're also on the website, so I can send those out. Great. So Tricia, can we take a look then at the overview of the full communication? And Karen, I hope we may, Margot Day did this, the other one. It's uh Casey did that that first one. Margot, oh, thank you, Emily. Thank you so much. Um, I think there's like a nice little visual there. I think the language is pretty simplistic. Um, and so I'm gonna build some of the, you know, excitement around it. Here we go. Perfect. Emily, thank you so much. This is, we're gonna just scroll down. So um, you know, again, please give us feedback on this, but I think based on our last meeting, there was hopefulness that we could be able to sort of say, what have we already done in phase one? Sort of what can we celebrate? Um, what has been, what has been completed? And as you can see, a number of the projects are there with the dates. Then we had some of those little interim projects, right? The roof and the HVAC, although maybe not as glamorous, but super important. And then we have phase two. And so you'll see a lot of the before pictures, right, in this because they're not yet complete, so you'll sort of see this ongoing. And then as these are complete, we can update them with completed pictures and then move on to the updates of the future construction. So we'll build on this. I'm hoping we got close to what people were looking for, a sort of a one top shop of of sort of a very user friendly guide of the capital project. And again, this will be on the website. This can be, um, we'll share this out. Um, Lily shares every week, updates with all of our principals and directors, and so they could use this um for their purposes for you as board members. You could sort of have this in your toolkit, ready to go as people ask you questions. And so we hope that um we've sort of done a nice, easy to follow guidance document on the capital project to date. And we're absolutely open to feedback because we want this to be um non-static. Karen. We can, this will be shared with everyone, every district director, principal, um E I, right? All of us, all of you. Yeah, and it will also be on the website.
It'll be physically.
We. Oh.
If it's only on the website, then get my point one, instead, please don't contact.
We, yeah, I think that's a great idea. We can definitely make posters of this um to be able to be displayed in the buildings. Um, and I I agree with you. I noticed this one does not have the communication protocol on it. It's just sort of more informational. Um, and the other one is more of like, what does it mean to me? Um, so I'm not sure. Do you think we want to include a communication protocol on this? Is that is that something that we? Right. Yeah, we can do that. We can definitely all include that in the in like a link to next time. Great feedback. Thank you. That's right. No, go only in front of.
Um. So I know a couple of schools that I'm connected to, their principals have sent out. Do we know if all principals and about all buildings have sent out some formal communication about any work that's happening this summer? Or or can we make sure that that happens as part?
I can make sure that happens.
I think it'd be helpful just for folks that were on it. Uh, the graphic, the first thing looks great. Um, my my only concern would be if we're not doing any asbestos abatement. Should we have that second page to be like, hey, here's what our asbestos abatement protocol looks like, even though it may not be happening at your school? I don't know if that's what we talked about or.
I don't know of a building this summer that is not dealing with asbestos.
Chris, Chris, this was a pretty good. Okay.
But we'll double check that.
Yeah, and then this visual, I I do like, it is kind of what I was envisioning to help people realize that there's progress, it's been moving, it's continued to be ongoing. I think that helps people get a sort of scale of scope about what's been taking place as opposed to click this box, which I think is a little harder.
So I I I agree. I think it's really nice. My only question would be um, the twenty nineteen capital project. I think a lot of people will see that and go twenty nineteen. That was years ago. I mean, can we say something?
Uncritiqued.
Yeah, twenty nineteen to ongoing or twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four or something that says, hey, this is what's happening now. You voted for it in twenty nineteen and we're still paying for it, but.
Right. Yeah, I thi- I think what you see is sort of the um the industry standard, right? I think all school districts name their capital project by the year that the voters approved it. Um, and we can, we can own that, right? To change it and call it anything we want. We can say ongoing capital project efforts if you'd like. Um, that that's completely up to you. We've always identified it as the twenty nineteen capital project.
As as Jill queue public here, I'm saying, wait minute, twenty nineteen was a long time ago, you know, so. Yeah, just if other people think that makes sense, I would not start out with twenty eighteen, maybe say it was approved at twenty nineteen or whatever. Kind of call it something else. Does that make sense here?
Okay.
Like this, we could stay and talk like updated as of whatever day twenty twenty three. It's just like when the students were here and they questioned. Bathrooms, restrooms, but yet knowing that it was done how many years ago. So this is a reminder to us and the community members. Yes, we voted on this in twenty nineteen, they see the country provision as it's happened now. It was like, um, in a couple of years, we'll say the twenty twenty three. So the reminder to people that this happens.
Okay, for a couple of my reasons.
We'll review, I'll review this with the communications team and see if we can try to um, you know, come up with a really nice uh middle.
I I am gonna go right down the middle. The only thing that caught me was not the website that said the twenty nineteen capital project was the URL that said twenty nineteen capital project. That's the one that caught me. So it just said, I expect the schools dot org backslash capital project or cap project. I don't know what kind of fancy language the kids are using. Uh, but I also understand what Karen's saying as well, right? If this is standard, then it is what it is. But I didn't, it I did notice it and I would not think if I was looking for it, that I would be typing in the two thousand nineteen capital project. I wonder what happens if you do a Google search, it just comes up, right? We don't have to worry about it.
It it never hurts to remind our audience that we do not pay for all of this out of our budget. Right? But there's a thing called debt service. And we try to control that as best we can. I don't know how you would incorporate it, but I would say again, it never hurts to say that as many times as possible.
It's front loaded on the website.
It is right front and center on the website. And and also maintaining our goal of keeping debt service at seven percent or up there around of our total general fund.
That's probably good enough. If that interests you, you probably go to the website and see. But I know every single year I've been doing this, I get those questions. That's why I'm budget. So I asked what taxes and you can't afford it.
There's even, um, if I can recall, it's been a little bit, but there's even an explanation both on the FAQ of the budget and then on the capital project website area of what you can use debt service for, because that's another common question that we get, right? Why can't you take that money and put it into? And then you can fill in the blanks specifically, probably salaries of folks. And you know, there's very clear rules about debt service and what you can use that for.
Thank you, Amanda.
I'm I'm thank you for allowing us to review this. We're really excited and thanks for the challenge. It was fun to to work with the communications team on it.
We'll try to find more for you.
I I'm always, as you all know, I am open for the chance.
Heather, come and give us a facilities update.
Um, sure. Yeah. No, thanks. Uh, just a couple um with pictures. Hope everyone's there. It's a long one. Um, so today's uh, uh, update for facilities includes, um, three quick little blurbs. Uh, one is, uh, an overlap, um, with what Lily will be speaking to, and that shows the B J M slide in full use and the, uh, the porta potty to make the Markle's, um, grassy areas accessible and usable for B J M students. So thanks.
They just started talking about this, it seems, and now it's done. Beautiful.
Well, um, it's, we're, we're making progress in the correct direction to support teaching and learning for sure. And to support our community. I think this is important for both. Um, it's part of a larger, uh, area of focus for us in that, uh, Mark ALO is, uh, scheduled and will begin next week. Um, our playground safety inspections. And, uh, we really felt like it was a great time to increase everyone's capacity to understand, um, all the, the current, um, safety measures, really. We want to make sure that our custodians know, our building folks know, our ma- maintenance staff and our grounds. So that, um, you know, we're making safe, safe places to play all around the district. So that's an easy and quick update, uh, just above it. Um, it, it's, uh, it's not really the detail of the picture that you need to see, because I can just tell you about it. This is, um, this is one of our efforts to build capacity and understanding that we have 6,000 thinkers in the district and about a hundred of them are, are on facility staff. And they have a lot of great ideas and historically maybe those ideas, um, haven't been solicited. So this is an idea for organization, uh, for our grounds department. And this was brought forward by one of our groundskeepers, Andrew Demat. And, um, he went old school cardboard, um, with paper and markers to present. Um, uh, we challenged the groundskeeper to, you know, see how can we up our game everywhere? Um, and demonstrate what, what you know and have learned. And so we had folks come in and some, you know, they all had a different way to show what they know and had learned. What was great about it is that it got everybody thinking about best practices. And how can we take care of, um, the kids? How can we take care of the adults better? So that was exciting for me, uh, and, and for the folks that were involved in Browns. Andrew said, and he's been here, I think 14 years, um, he said that it has never been an open collaborative process to get ideas. And for me, I'm really proud of, um, all of my staff embracing that change and opportunity. Because they are, um, a hundred of the 6,000 thinkers and they have great ideas and they're going to do amazing things for kids. So on the left, um, is just a screen grab and then there's a tiny URL, um. The maintenance also came forward with some ideas and maintenance has partnered with tech. This is Larry Carr and he created, um, a video about, um, the process by which B J M's heating systems, they do a switch over and it becomes their cooling system. And this was his answer to how do we make this so even after we're gone, people understand and know how to do it? And, and there's a record of what's here. And he worked with Sharon Nelson and, um, this, it took them over a week and they produced like a really nice, really nice 20 minute long video that explains the entire process. And it's part of that larger effort to make sure that everything we do in facilities becomes, uh, scalable and sustainable and that there's carryover so that, that there's never a drop off when there's a change in staff and that we're able to support teaching and learning by growing our knowledge base and by sharing it with others. So this concludes my story hour, but I am open for questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Uh, let, not a question, but again, just another compliment. Uh, it's, I can get people saying that they've never been asked. At the same point in time, folks have definitely yelled at me. So they, they've had a place to get some of their ideas out there. Uh, but the, the open invitation probably is a, a switch of in terms of how the direction of information flows for that. I'm very excited. Uh, I don't know if I have the full 20 minutes to watch the video, but if we can get the URL, I I'm curious to see what that process looks like if that can come onto the board's way. Um, and we could also probably help for us to be able to give out when folks ask us questions. Because as we know, this space, which we'll, sure, we'll talk about at some point. That, that changeover, people are always wondering, you know, what's too hot, what's too cold? And I don't think people understand the complexity. It's not just we pull the switch. That's what I'm understanding. It's a 20 minute video. Is that?
Yeah. Yep. It is. Um, Emily had asked at the beginning, you know, do you want to play the video? And I was like, well, no. It's our meeting, but, um, you're, you're welcome to watch it if you'd like. We can probably play a little bit of.
I think all board product have access to it.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's in board docs. It doesn't show an attachment. You have to go click into facilities update.
Uh, that's perfect. I think. Thank you.
I see. But this, this doc, yeah, that can, there is in board docs. Gotcha.
Yeah.
I think it's great for you to continue to say to reference the number of employees under your direction. But I'm, we've known it's a big number. I don't think I've ever heard it from what I say. Right? So as far as I know, it's, it's our teaching staff, it's transportation. And then you guys, the third largest group in the district, am I correct? Larger than the cafeteria staff, right? So turn that number around a little more.
No, it, it might be closer to 83, but I rounded up because.
You know, nobody was checking.
Yeah. We're looking to expand. I, I do appreciate that. They are really just an amazing group of hardworking folks that really want to make a difference. They really, really do. Thank you, Heather.
Oh, I did have a question. The porta potty at the, is it going to be there throughout the summer or?
Mm-hmm. So the porta potty is, uh, Jackie and Larissa asked for six keys for it. So they, they can, it has an ICSD box on it so that, um, when ICSD staff isn't using it, then, um, then it doesn't become anything other than what it was intended for. And then, uh, if you are wondering, we also set up a regular scheduled cleaning, um, and uh, worked with the company to make sure that it never becomes, uh, gross. Yeah, that's the, that's the goal there.
But that means that it won't be available over the summer.
It is available depending on who's there.
If there's a school event.
Right. If, yeah, if it's school personnel, if it's, um, G I C or community, I think the bathrooms are open by the pool. So, um, it was my understanding that this was to really support the, all the times that the B J M community of learning would be using that space during the school year. Okay.
Just to note on that project innovation in summer, so that might be relevant. I don't know if that communicated to.
That, that definitely, yeah, project innovation would definitely be included.
Well, yeah, simply fast. And there's 300 people walking the bathroom, which is a regular occurrence. Uh, is there an access? And, yeah, and Alex has closed us down. Uh, I forget whatever time it was, but it's six, I mean, it's right, six P M. So I realized that that's not. Maybe you can have a conversation with the city.
Or with G, yeah, with G I C.
I, I think for me, that action step is to reach out to G I C tomorrow and, and have those, I appreciate you elevating that and bringing that forward. Um, I didn't think along those lines.
They've left the center open and ask. Yes, yes, across. But the same thing that we're talking about before, crossing the street, young kids, right? But what the, I mean, that's all part of the long-term thing that we're going to try to figure out. Yeah. Thank you. I, I mean, that's fantastic. What a big step.
They may also assume that the porta potty is open when it isn't. So, yeah, that's great. You'll take care of that, Heather.
Where is it accessible? Cause I could see the court and I know where they usually have food. Hopefully it's not close.
It's, um, just, it's right next to our parking lot in a little bit of a shaded area. I don't know if you can see from there, so.
That's pretty much right next to the hot dog.
So again, with that information, like nothing is, is so permanent that we can't reach out to our partners at G I C and make the adjustments that we need to, to support the whole community.
Let's, let's continue with our discussion of the B J M playground at this point. Lily, were you going to join us for that? And anyone else should come down front who is particularly involved or interested in that. We did have a dis- uh, one more preliminary discussion about this just last month at our facilities committee meeting. It was May 17th. And at that time, we discussed the possibility of a Markle's flats porta potty. And, uh, the slide, Heather told us that the plan was to fix the slide and take care of some broken things. So we're moving right along on that. And what else can you tell us?
Great. Hey, Brian, how you doing?
How are you, Lily?
I'm great. It's nice to see you. I'll take this. It's funny too, because Brian and I never knew each other until this, and now, now it seems like we're old friends. So it's, it's a good, good situation. Um, so we have been so grateful for the support of Heather and the facilities crew, Jackie and Larissa, Amanda, Mary, everybody has really come together in order to make sure that A, our garden at B J M is open again and functional. So we have construction that's happening nearby. If you haven't been to the Beverly J Martin Elementary School Playground, um, right nearby, there is an amazing construction site that is occurring. And, um, there is a whole new center, teen center, including a gym, et cetera, that's, that's, um, in the process of being demoed slash constructed. Um, that's, uh, that's used to be the old Immaculate Conception, um, school, gymnasium. So, uh, that's functional, which is great. The slide is functional, which is great. Um, there are two more days left of school. Um, but as, uh, folks reminded us, we have project innovation that is going to be at Beverly J Martin this summer, which we're really excited about. Jamie Driscoll will be the principal and she's working directly with the amazing Mary Grover. Um, and there's a lot of outdoor time, um, that is, that is planned, um, as well. And so that access to Markle's is important. Um, and, uh, obviously collaborating with the folks at G I C as well. When I used to run the pre K summer school that was at Beverly J Martin, a good 10-ish years ago. Um, every summer I would just go over and, and say hello to the folks at G I C, make sure we are all on the same page and collaborating as well. So that's going to be an important step as well. Um, obviously having the bathroom across the way is really helpful. Um, and, uh, the stop sign, walkie talkie and cone situation seemed to be worked out to allow for some pretty uh, relatively easy access, um, to go back and forth. So obviously much more to come, right? It's certainly not a perfect system still yet, right? Um, and I've, I've been pretty impressed with the work that's happened since February in order to get some more things, um, in place for the immediate future.
Do you mind if I say a few things? Um, thank you. Yeah. First I want to say thanks to Heather for those improvement and everyone else who was involved in those improvements. Actually, I mean, I have a little spy who goes to B J M every day who did not tell me that the slide was in, so I'm going to have to ask him why. Uh, so I just had a few quick questions, uh, for those that don't, who don't know me, I'm Brian Dillon. I'm a B J M parent. Um, and Heather answered some of them. I was going to ask about the short term improvements and I think the bathroom is fantastic in that regard as well. Um, in terms of the short term, there was another issue lingering that I just wanted to check in about, which was about the kind of auxiliary support that the board had pledged and that I've heard from B J M leadership is there in the background, but I wanted this to be part of the public discussion as well. Auxiliary support for the things that can be done to enrich the B J M outdoor space in the, in the, in the time it's going to take before there's a big rethink of the space. So things that have come up in conversations with parents, teachers, just around, just so that you're aware are, uh, the rebuilding of the pavilion that was destroyed by arson. Um, the, um, the, 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 the funding that can be made available for buying jump ropes, for buying hula hoops, for buying these kinds of enriching outdoor things. I know this has been discussed in private discussions and side discussions and, and in the way things should be, but I wanted to make sure we had a discussion in the public forum as well about what the plans are for that. Um, and then I wanted to, um, update the board on, in this group on, on a couple of other things. Um, I actually had a meet and greet at the playground with Janet Lowback, who was introduced by Sean and others to me in, in these discussions. We had a really fantastic walk through the B J M playground and, um, I think next year I'm going to transition from just being a individual parent showing up to talk about this one issue to working through the B J M P T A with Janet to involve students in some of the kinds of activities that uh, the board is supporting at Fault Creek and elsewhere. And we're, um, going to seek some funding to support that. Um, and so in, in thinking about that, five issues keep coming up for the Markle's flats area across the street from B J M. And so, um, those five issues are the crossing, the fencing, um, the bathrooms, the storage for teachers and those who are engaging kids in outdoor activities to leave equipment and things safely on the block. And then the configuration and the usage, which is currently a baseball field that gets, um, little to no usage. And lots of things have come up and in discussions with the B J M community. The thing that comes up most often is that our kids play a lot more soccer than baseball. We, their kids play soccer. Now, I, I have to recuse myself from that because I started the B J M soccer program. And so I have a vested interest in more soccer, but I, I think, uh, that's the fifth issue. So what's the, what's the orientation of the fields and what's the equipment that's being provided? And so our, our hope is that through working with the B J M community and others, next year, we can keep the conversation going about what from the P T A and the parent side, the space, um, uh, could be so that it can feed into the, um, discussions at the board and at this meeting about, um, the timing of when some of those changes can take place. And so that there's a plan in place when, when the money arrives. Um, so that's it. I wanted to check in about that. So I think that the main question that I had is that apart from the updates that Heather gave, um, what can I tell parents and others who I talked to about this, about what is being provided to B J M to make sure the outdoor space continues to be enriched next year in the short-term ways? Thanks.
No, I'm probably going to have your best answer. All right, great. Uh, if that's okay. All right, great. Um, so a few things, folks had asked about crossing, um, and I'll let Jill and Sean probably talk a little bit about some longer term crossing situations. I'm not sure if you were here for that, Brian. Um, when we've talked about this previously in other months. But, uh, the stop sign, walkie, um, cone setup was suggested by, uh, Jackie and some other teachers and Larissa, um, as a, as a system in the meantime to cross at the typical crosswalk now. Uh, so that's been the, the short-term solution there. Um, and yes, we gave folks the green light to order all sorts of things. Um, where we've been looking at storage, it's a little more complicated than you think. Or then, uh, you know, you might originally think, right? Those great deck storage boxes are cool, uh, but they easily can be removed. Um, so then we're, we think then about sheds, et cetera. They need either, um, gravel poured, right? Or they need et cetera, you know, all those kinds of things. And, and we don't talk, yeah, we, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues with those that come up logistically. Um, so we were trying to think about what some other options might be in relationship to that in order to take things over to Markle's. Um, and then the last thing is folks had asked for benches and for tables. So benches have gone in. Thank you, Heather and crew. And tables are coming as well. Oh, and the benches have flower pots with them as well. Is that correct, Heather?
So Travis, for your bill, some benches, uh, down there and then benches that are, uh, basically the top, uh, and they're
Wonderful. Thank you.
Um, thanks. Maybe I could ask one more concrete question. Could what's the specific steps on the crossing that the ICSD had? I, I last, when I was here three months ago, the discussion was about reaching out to the city.
I can tell you where I think it is at this point. I can tell you where I think it is at this point. Others are welcome to chime in. We, it wasn't as straightforward as I thought it might be. Uh, on the board itself, we have differences of opinion as to whether there should be a mid block crossing. Um, or it ranges pretty much from people who think the whole the whole block should be closed to traffic to people who think it's pretty much fine the way it is. So we need a bit more discussion on our own. I floated a proposal to have the traffic engineer take a look at it and make some suggestions to us. Um, and I'm still happy to do that if we can, the city's traffic engineer. I'm still happy to do that if we can get agreement on that, and that would be the next step as far as formal dealing with that issue on a city street. And I think it's, you know, it's not a heavily trafficked city street by city standards, but it is an important city street. And certainly the fire department, among others, would be very unhappy with it being closed off. Um, in in my experience with this sort of thing. So we need a little bit more time and I got a nod from Karen. I got a nod from Sean. Okay, so my my next move with my colleague's approval would be to write a letter to the city's traffic engineer and say we could use your expertise on this, come in and talk to us about you know, what you think from your perspective as a professional and what ideas you have for us.
And we had also stated that we would have to contact GAC because they've been in discussion about this over the year. So this is not just an ICSD issue or concern. But get their involvement, get their historical knowledge on it.
And I would add two things. First, humbly and respectfully, the work you've been doing is amazing. I don't have any social media, but yet folks like to send me things. And so if I'm not mistaken, you were quoted in a recent article saying that you didn't feel like the board had a sense of urgency. I don't know if that was a direct quote from you, if that was an accurate quote or not, but I want to make sure that we all are on the same page as well. Right? So there is beyond a sense of urgency and folks have been doing this work for quite some time. So part of our conversations are at the board level, where if you've been paying attention to that street at between BGM space and Marcos Flats over the past six to seven years, there's been a number of different attempts at traffic mitigation. Right? So you count on they put all four way stop down at the one corner. They did a roundabout, so you just can't fly over. They put speed bumps in. They've been doing a number of different things to try what takes place. We've been having this conversation with the city for probably about three years. My immediate hesitation is I don't know what we should be doing in the middle of a major construction project, right? Like, doesn't mean we can't start planning for it now, but nothing's going to happen until that construction project is done. Right? There's staging, there's trucks coming through, there's dump trucks. So anything that we were to do at this point in time, and we've talked about a raised crosswalk, a pedestrian push button. We've had a number of these conversations. And so for us, for sort of a couple, for many of us, this is um, an ongoing dialogue and conversation that we're still trying to reconcile. Specifically because there are so many moving ports and I would, you were on DPW, so you know what a lot of tr- traffic is, right? I live in a road that gets ten thousand cars per day. That's a lot of traffic. I can tell you during drop off and pickup time, uh, that road is very well traveled and equally as dangerous for picking up your kid as it is to have your child walk across the street during the school day. So I think everyone knows, we've had dialogues with Tim Low, he's aware that something needs to take place as well. Um, and I I think to Karen's point and to Jill's point, the next step would be to get everybody in the room and see what takes place. But I want everyone to know, it's not going to be, we decide this on Tuesday and on Friday, something's in place. It's going to be, we probably want to do another traffic study. You've been down this path before, right? They're probably going to want to count cars. Uh, they're definitely worried about if we divert traffic, we know it goes to other streets, so then it makes other streets a little more dangerous. Then Buffalo may become a problem. And so I think we have to just find what's taking place. But please don't mistake the carefulness with us, us trying to approach for a lack of urgency. I don't think those two are connected. I think we we get it. We understand. And we have family and young ones that are in these spaces. So it's not just, it's our kids too.
Thank you, Sean. Give you a chance in just a second, Eldred. Um, I I I'm going to second what Sean said. This is not a quick fix, obviously. And we're looking at at least a year, probably longer before the city makes any sort of a change, any sort of permanent noticeable change in in a traffic pattern. And this is something I've been watching closely since the Nichols administration. When I was the Traffic and Parking Commissioner, oddly enough, for the city. So, um, yeah, it's it's a. I wish I did. So it's a, it's a much more complex issue than you might think, although in some ways it seems simple and obvious. I assure you it isn't. Uh, go ahead, Andrew.
I'm I'm sitting here smiling. We appreciate the passion of BGM parents. Um, but just understand when we undertook the mission of of having Marcos Flats built out, we understood this was a generational effort, right? That that was a a barren city block for a long time. And you all should have been there during the conversations to get that built. So this is moving at light speed compared to the project to give the urban air of the entire city block with which to play and to make these sort of plans. So hang in there. I'm had, I'm happy to hear that you are going to take the next step and become part of a longer term solution.
So stay tuned on Marcos Flats, BGM Playground. I'm going to move us along to our our last agenda.
About the baseball structure, because I remember I can't recall when I started going to, my children started going to BGM. But it was designated a baseball structure because it was to move that access from Cass Park into the city area. And the beauty about it, it doesn't really, other than a diamond, I guess it may have, it doesn't have any fixed structures. So to then try to convert it, it could be the flavor of the month, the sport and activity to a soccer um, structure now to who knows what it could be done next couple of years. That's why we have like the, we were just discussing the two thousand nineteen capital project to remind us when it started. So as long as it's a free flowing, open structure, so children could just run and enjoy themselves. That's the main purpose.
I I feel I need to respond on one point. Well, on that point.
Very quickly, if you do.
Very quickly. Sean, I hear you. Uh, let's talk offline about the broader context of the article that you're referring to. The last thing I would want is that the collaboration that's possible here to get in any way tainted by some misunderstanding like that. The baseball diamond interferes way more than you think. The kids will tell you that. So that is, that is a point of, a point of contention among the community. And then as far as the timing is concerned, I certainly didn't expect that I was going to come back and that we had a solution to the crossing. Um, but as a parent who thinks on like the time scale of my kids who are at BGM now, um, I will keep pushing, but I'll keep collaborating and working with you guys as well. But I I think when you said that this discussion's been going on for six to seven years, you're, what you're stating as somebody who's been in it is, look, we've been trying and there's effort here. But the way that also lands is, okay, it's been going on for a long time. Same with Marcos Flats, where we can go back and find records of the discussions and things. And what we still see is people who live in the neighborhood and whose kids go there is an almost entirely unused space. So it's not, uh, it's not that I don't appreciate the work that's going on. It's that what we see is what it, what it could be and what we want it to be sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and as someone who also has a grandbaby who I pick up every day from GAC.
You know.
It's a vastly different space with people doing forty miles per hour down the road three years ago than what it is now.
Which is great.
But I'm also trying to just provide it some perspective, like it it was beyond dangerous.
Yeah.
And now we're getting to be a little bit more savvy about what's taking place. But yes, we know that there's still potential options. And I, when Jill you first introduced it, we were still, we had a robust conversation. Um, but yes, it is time for us to bring Tim in and the city and GAC and have a conversation about what's possible.
And and INHS, who has a ton of people living right there now, kids using the playground, you know, INHS is another back player now on the block.
Okay. Thank you all for the discussion. Our last item for today is also something that uh, came from the public and Sean has brought it to my attention and urged me to begin the discussion on this. And that is that a student contacted us and asked that we actually demand it, but we'll, we'll go with ask for now that we fly the flag of the original inhabitants of this area over Ithaca High School. And that is about as much as I know at this point in time.
Well, Jill, thank you, because we had a little bit of a conversation about where would this be the best place to begin the dialogue? And I had recommended facilities. Because if this were something that the district want to do, uh, it would probably mean the construction of a new flag pole. Uh, a student who was right here in this room, um, Elder and I were both here presenting during Social Justice Week. Uh, and afterwards, a student came and identified as Honoshoni and said, um, I want to know why you don't fly the flag of my people on this space. You call it Indigenous Peoples' Day. There's a lot of conversation about how we're trying to support and affirm people. Um, and one of the things to do that would be to recognize uh, whose land we stand on and did not, was not in support of a land acknowledgement statement, though that's not the student's right responsibility. I said I would research it and see what would take place. I had a conversation with Station Sam George, uh, who's considered to be one of the elders and leaders of the Gaia Kono. Um, uh, Station George was, uh, in support of the idea, wanted to know more of what that would be. Said oftentimes, uh, folks want to fly one flag over the other. And that would not be something that Station George wants for. The idea would be if we created two flag poles, would we be able to honor the the duality with which we we live. And so to Jill's point, which I thought you did eloquently, right? It may be a policy issue. It may be a full board conversation, but I thought we would at least be able to just start the conversation and see where it goes, you know? That that was the idea behind it. So I don't know anymore beyond that, beyond some conversations. The student has written to me twice. Um, as a senior should, like, words black flags. And I said, thank you for your continuous reminding me. I will, I will get back to you. And maybe what I can do is ask the student if they'd be willing. I don't want to name the student without their permission, but ask them if they'd be willing to write to the board as well to give a little bit of a backstory about what they were hoping for. Um, that may provide some some additional context, but but that's, that's the idea behind the agenda item, uh, four point five of of flags.
Um, ask board members here if they want to share thoughts or respond to that at this moment. Otherwise, I'm going to refer it to the next facilities meeting for a longer discussion in hopes that the student will be here and maybe others who are interested in this topic will be here. So Eldred and Will.
Will it go to the policy committee too, to just see if there's anything in our current policies? There's nothing.
There's nothing other than what is already currently stated in Ed Law. And I've reached out to NISBA as well about what other school districts have done, uh, and be happy to report on that as well.
Uh, this, this, this could be fascinating. Within that population, you may know, I know Sean knows, there's a bit of contention between the folks who represent the federal government now and the Bureau of Indian Affairs and a smaller contingent who uh, claim to be more represented by Queen Mothers who who are descendants of the original people on the land. I'm not saying that to say we should stop. I'm saying that to say this could be an opportunity for us to bring some parties together to have a pretty deep conversation about about what what it would mean to have that flag and who would it represent.
But just to Jill's point, is that we have a couple of board members here? Is that a conversation that should be had in facilities? Is that a conversation that should be had at a board meeting? Should it be had in policy?
Should be had.
And finance, because it would cost some money. I'm not. Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand where the appropriate places to engage in this.
Could be had in curriculum, so the kids can do some presentations and educate the entire community.
All right, we got Eldred's vote.
I I guess we can start at facilities as we started today, because then a lot of things will um, happen with the physical structure of the building. Not that we're proceeding with anything as of yet, and it will be financial impact, but to continue the communication.
So do I, the board's okay to follow up with the student, do some more research?
Yes.
Have a wider conversation for the next board meeting with some additional information. And right again, we know this is not going to be a quick fix either, right? Because this is an ongoing part, but at least if there's movement, I would I would like to tell a graduating senior that we're moving on this and we'll find out whether it's going to happen or not as opposed to hey, take your diploma on tomorrow. We'll see you later.
Good luck to you.
And and it's a good opportunity to have the conversation opens for the community to get involved and knowing that they could always, um, write anything, let's talk, the portal to just we get feedback first. And and to hear, um, from NISBA, um, if there are any other school districts that who have encountered this.
Noted.
Very good. With that, I'll thank everyone for their contributions and allow finance to take over the table. And this is, uh, adjourning the meeting of the Facilities Committee. Thank you all.